Apologize for being a minute or two late, but what we're gonna do is, I'll call the meeting order in just a minute. If you would, take your cell phones, cut them off or put them on vibrate so that it doesn't disturb somebody later on. And I'm gonna ask the board before, I guess, during the welcome or whatever, we need to add something to the agenda after public comments. If we could have an executive session to discuss personnel and we need to discuss some personnel issue with our county attorneys. So I guess I need to call the meeting order first and then before we start in on the agenda, could I, if it's hard, could I get a motion after public comments to have an executive session to discuss personnel?
Seven.
Got a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin? Is unanimous? So our agenda has been adjusted so after the public comments, we'll have a, I'm sure it'll be real brief, but it'll be an executive session to discuss personnel. If we would, in just a minute, I'm gonna ask that you stand and we're gonna have the pledge of allegiance. After that, I'm gonna let y'all sit back down and Commissioner Taryn Cheek will do a devotion and then she'll call on someone to pray. So if you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please be seated.
Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing?
Great.
Good evening.
Ha, I can't believe another year's almost over. Title of my devotional since next week, we celebrate Thanksgiving. And today, we're just gonna thank God for life, because that's really what Thanksgiving is all about. Psalms 107:8 says, "Oh, that men would praise the Lord for his goodness and for his wonderful works to the children of men." As a nation, we do remember Thanksgiving, that's, we celebrate what the pilgrims did when they came over, how they survived that first winter. They celebrated that. They were happy and thankful to God that they had their lives, because so many had died, over half of them. And in James 4:14, we read, he says, he tells us, "What is life? What is your life in particular?" We should be thankful for our life just because we were born, just because God has given us life. What's your life? What are you doing in your life and with your life to be thankful for? And as we think about our lives this, today, tonight, next week, maybe, as you're thinking about Thanksgiving, think about what are you thankful for? Are you literally thankful for your life? You stop every day and think about, you know, I'm just thankful I'm born. I'm thankful for the life that God has given me and all the many blessings he's bestowed upon me, just to be born in this country is something to be thankful for. And we all have a very glorious future. And think about it, your life is a gift from God and is our present, and that's today. I'm gonna close with a poem and then a prayer, and the poem is written by Charles Hanson Town. And it says, "Lord, I am glad for the great gift of living, glad for your days of rain and sun, grateful for the joy with an endless Thanksgiving, grateful for laughter and grateful for pain. Sun and bloom and blossom, oh Lord, I remember, the dream of spring and its joys I will recall. But now in the silence and pain of November, Lord, I give thee thanks, giver of all." The psalmist cried out, "What shall I render unto the Lord for all his benefits towards me?" And the answer is simple, our life. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this evening. I thank you for those who've chosen to attend, to listen as we do your business. And Father, I ask that you would give us wisdom and knowledge and grant us to do the things that are right and good in your eyes for the betterment and for the improvement of our county. In Jesus Christ, I am, I pray. Amen.
Again, I want to thank y'all for coming. Like I said, if you would, make sure your cell phones are turned off or on vibrate. At this time, we don't see any elected officials. We do have Ms. Judy Madden with the Chamber of Commerce. If you've got anything you wanna speak to the board about. Okay.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for coming. The first thing we have on the agenda is the approval amendment minutes. We have the minutes of the November 4th, 2013 regular meeting. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes?
Make a motion we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and we have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin? Is unanimous? We'll go down into old business. We have the Hordergeorge Regional Airport Authority appointed. I believe we didn't get anybody interested in the ads and it's, it's up to the board. So does anybody have a suggestion for tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to propose Neil Spradley.
Okay, we have a nomination of Neil Spradley. Do we have another, a second to that nomination?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Unin', can we get a motion then to close the nominations?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin', so the nominations are closed, but we need to make a motion to approve Neil Spradley as our appointment. Can we get that in the form of a motion?
I'll slow move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin? We'll go to the Sheriff's Department firing range. I really, I was gonna check with sheriff and see if, you know, we kinda wanted to plan of what they planned to do and I failed to do that, you know, catch up with him. So I don't know if anybody else did, but I will try to make that a, an extra point of interest to try to get it done before our next meeting, unless somebody else has another update. Okay. I think there was one thing I should've mentioned under old business, and that would be Mr. Leroy Sparrow, yes? And I think Commissioner, Ms. Taryn Cheek had done some research with the county attorney. So I think one of those.
How y'all doing today? Yep. I called John after, now, now, alright. I called our attorney, Mr. Harrington, after our meeting last week, two weeks ago, and he had researched and found the county ordinances that were in question, because nobody seemed to really know exactly what they said. This ordinance was passed when James Spradley was the county commissioner, and I understand that also there might be another ordinance that's more recent.
More related.
More related to noise, okay. Alright, but anyway, I'll be glad to give you a copy of this. After the meeting today, tonight, we'll give you a copy. But basically, what this ordinance says is that a club is defined as e-business established for the operation and entertainment purposes when an admission fee is charged. And I think y'all told me y'all do charge a small admission fee.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it says that the establishment must close no later than 1:00 a.m.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And y'all were asking that to be extended to 2:00 a.m., but the ordinance is in place for 1:00 a.m. And it says that you have to close at 1:00 and then not open, reopen until 11:00 a.m. the next morning. So that's really all I found out, is that there is ordinances on file that 1:00 a.m. is a thing, and I haven't had a chance to talk with my fellow commissioners about, did they want to change that closing time?
Yes, ma'am.
But, because I was mainly just interested to make sure we knew what we were talking about, to make sure there was actually an ordinance that said something, you know, about restrictions on these establishments and the entertainment. So basically, that's all I found out for you, and I don't know if the fellows wanna address or try to change the times or what.
And I would ask, and like you said, um...
Hold up to the mic, please.
Yes, sir. Um, like we said, that's what it, they told us that there was an ordinance to close at 1:00, but what we're asking, what do we need to do to just have that extended, the extra hour? Because, I mean, like, for what we do, if we close there early, it's hard. You know what I mean? It's hard. And if you rent a building or you rent an act, like, we already paid a deposit for a major act to come down and we just lost our money, you know, because we can't stay open. So what we're saying is, what do we have to do, you know, to stay in compliance, that we can stay open that extra hour? And we asking that if you guys would take it into consideration. We have a pretty hefty police force. We have sheriff's department, police department, the, um, state patrol surrounding, you know, and we intend to be compliant when we out there. It's not like we gonna be out there and somebody's cutting the fool and wanna fight, and we're gonna say, no, no, if, you're responsible for your own actions, because we have a business to run, and we just wanna be open and forward and see if there's any way possible that y'all can extend that until 2:00. And like I said, I don't have a business of my, I don't have a building of my own or property of my own, but it's in my interest, because a lot of these people, they hire me to promote, but what happened, just this weekend, I had promoted a party down McCray and took like 120 people out of Dodge County who went to McCray's huddle house and bought McCray's gas. And that idiot who drove through and probably was drinking, McCray's police force. And, I mean, that's some contribution, you know, to revenue in our county. And what we plan to do, we plan to have security, if we have to, off-duty law enforcement, but we really need that extra time in order to, if we give, if we give a show or whatever and we ask people to come out and we make up a promotion campaign or what have you, you know, we don't wanna get in a situation where we get people there and then 1:00 comes and then they say, "Close it down," and now it's a revolt, like, we paid our money. And that's what we're trying to avoid, and we're trying to find whatever way possible.
The simple answer to that, my name is John Harrington, by the way. We didn't meet last time. I was not here.
Yes, sir.
It is within this board's authority to amend their ordinances that are already on the books. And whether they not, they wanna do that tonight, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
You have some valid points. Now, other things you might need to consider if you're asking to do this is how close your establishment is to people, to residences or homes?
Yes, sir.
Because I think traffic on residential roads, Fred Bohannon Road is a residential road.
Yes, sir.
Commercial too, but residential primarily.
Yes, sir.
And something, we do have a noise ordinance here also.
Yes, sir.
Because we did have some problems with the club, being too close to some residents before, and some residents is complaining about that. I have not been to your site, I don't know how close you are to homes or houses, but they can't give you a waiver as the current ordinance stands, because it doesn't provide for it.
Yes, sir.
They could amend to either just open it up wide open or whatever time you want it. You could set it up so that a special permit had to be acquired for special, one-time-only situations. It's not a bad idea to offer to have law enforcement or somebody there to keep the peace, because sometimes when alcohol is involved, and I'm not suggesting you're selling alcohol or just brown bagging going on, or...
Well, like I told him at the last meeting, you can't be responsible for an individual.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, I'm saying, for what they, if they come, if they come to our establishment and we tell them, "We don't sell liquor, we're not gonna sell liquor," because we know, once before, somebody else in the community had a place like that, and that was like the major thing, and it was a shutdown and...
And I think that's what we're talking about. You can't sell liquor, charge admission, or parking to avoid saying it's a by permission thing.
Right.
You can't sell setups and say it's not for brown bagging.
And that's what we're trying to avoid. This is what we're trying to do, and being that we're presenting it to you like this, we know that that's what you all would expect, had you have to come out or what have you, or if you get any complaints or what have you. And like I said, I don't own a property or a building, but it's in my interest, because most of the people who do things around here like that, they get me to promote, perform, bring my rap group guys out or what have you, and that's been going on for lots of years, you know, in other counties. And Jimmy knows, when he, I mean, I don't hate to drop names, but he knows, he worked in our neighborhood and stuff like that. I always have to give parties, promote parties, stuff like that.
In answer to your question, it is within their discretion to make an amendment. Whether you wanna present an ordinance to them or just ask them to open up, consider it's no question, however y'all wanna approach it.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody on the board commissioners?
Yes, sir.
I'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you want me to.
Yes, sir.
We can, yeah, just, y'all work it out and then he can talk with us about it, and then we can see if we can move forward with some suggestions or maybe some amendments to this ordinance, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, then, does anybody on the board have any more old business? Okay, we need to go to new business, the airport sewage line.
I'd like to speak to that.
Okay.
Just on, I'm not sure. It is now.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm stepping out of terms here, I don't know, but we would like to address this.
Okay.
Is it too late to address this?
Well, would you just wait till we get to public comments?
That's great. I see you're not...
And I'm gonna come around the room and you can do it again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Airport sewage line.
Out of the airport at DPS, the sewage line is four inches. I have a four-inch sewage line going to DPS, which is residential line, with their increase in employment up to around 70 people using it now, it's just not sufficient. And so the airport has worked on putting out a six-inch line, which the city engineer has recommended, and gonna be a cost of a little over $5,000. And as Airport Authority member, I was coming to ask the county and also the city will be asked to participate in this, and so I'd like to ask for up to $2,800, it might not be that much, but up to $2,800 be available for this project.
Okay, and would you like to make that in form of a...
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Where does that come from?
I might go, motion, add to the motion, that that would come from discretionary fund.
Contingency.
Contingency fund.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion. Since you seconded the motion, do you agree with the amendment?
No, we gotta, we gotta hold up. Anything over 2,500, well, it's a governmental thing, it said over 2,500, we gotta, we gotta bid it, is that why?
We had two bids and that wasn't qualified.
If they're properly advertised and properly bid out, it would qualify. I wasn't aware there was a bid, I was just reminding her.
Yeah, she reminded me. Yeah, he was reminding me of that.
Okay, so it was bid out?
They did, we did have two bids.
Okay.
I'm not sure how it was advertised.
It was not.
It was not advertised.
Okay. But then y'all might wanna check on that again, I guess. But it's got to tie into the city sewer system, so they'll have to approve it, right?
Right.
And it is tying into the city system. We could change, I mean, if it's hard with the board...
I would say this now, you can approve a dollar amount subject to proper bidding. I'm not trying to slow you down, because we don't wanna hurt a business, but you just, y'all have a policy in place. It's a policy, it's not a statute.
Right.
You can change the policy, but you have it in place and if you don't follow it, you...
Follow it.
I'm not trying to, to rain them parade or slow things down. Now, you can approve up to $2,800 subject to proper bids, but...
What about, yeah, if the bids were done properly?
I mean, I don't know, I wasn't there when it opened, don't have it advertised.
I think their policy is a little bit different than what our policy is, so their policy might not be in line with ours. So I would like to change my motion to give up to $2,800 to the Airport Authority for discretionary use in a sewage project.
Okay, is that, you can do that? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Taryn, did our attorney not advise us that there were certain ways you do the bid process, and this can fall under, you seeking a, a view?
Yeah, Judy, we can't hear you.
The bid without going through.
Open mic.
Not going through, but a different bid process.
Yes, it did fall in line with what the Airport Authority's rules are, but I think ours might be a little different here, so I'm not sure that it did fall in line.
But if you're giving it to another governmental entity and they're responsible for the bid, that kinda takes y'all off the hook.
Okay, so the first motion technically died for a lack of a second, because it didn't have the, so you, you're gonna make a new motion, and would you repeat your motion?
The new motion would be to supply the Airport Authority with up to $2,800 for use as discretionary funds on sewage project.
And it would come out of our discretionary.
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay, that is the motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll make a...
When you set up the $2,800, is that a 50/50 split between us and the city?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bobby, do we have that much funds in...
In the contingency fund? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Alright, any other questions? Okay, so everybody noticed the motion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin? Is unanimous? And we will go down to appointments. We have, I think y'all got something tonight, we have an appointment to the Dodge County Board of Assessors. Does anybody wanna make a nomination, or do y'all wanna table this until you have time to look at it? Or how do y'all wanna handle it? Y'all wanna put that, add to the paper or...
Motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table. And I have a second. No discussion on a motion to table, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin? We'll move down to the Recreation Department. I didn't see anything on that one, but do we have just one, or Ms. Gale, or...
Yes. Sorry. Mr. Wemond Pittman's term expires. He, he replaced John Jones, you know, when John retired, and John's term ran to December 31st, 2013, so his term will expire in a December.
Mr. Wemond Pittman. Okay, is there anybody wanna make a motion concerning that?
Motion to table.
Can we have a motion and a second to table? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unin? Alright, do we have any other new business before I check and see if we have any commissioner reports? Okay, is any of the commissioners, y'all been to a meeting or anything y'all wanna report on? Okay, we'll go to the county manager report.
I don't have anything, except we don't have a check list to approve today, because the payroll, the, the accounts payable clerk has been out for the past couple, almost two weeks.
Okay.
Mr. Bobby, I see you have a contingency fund there. Would you give us a little update on it?
The balance in it before this motion you just made was $88,418. The original amount was $119,268, and of course, we've, we've spent as part of it.
Okay, alright, does anybody on the board have a question for the county manager?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, Bob, I've been worrying you. We've had a lot of dirt road issues. Have, have you done anything about the Free Gift Road or the Fish and Springs Road? Have you checked it or anybody?
Yeah, he went out and checked it, and he was gonna do whatever he thought would help it, you know?
Yeah.
But mainly, it was lifeboat road, and there's not a lot that you can do to it. They said, they called it wrinkled, you know? And there's not a lot you can do with it, it dries it is.
That's true.
You gotta wait to get some rain to go in there and use a boat grader and sort of smooth it out, you know?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else got a question for the county manager? Okay, at this time, we're gonna do public comments. If you're just, I'm gonna go around the room, if you wanna make a comment, if you'll come up to the microphone and, you know, take hopefully less than five minutes, but, you know, three or less would be great. So I'll start over here, and Ms. Judy, we'll start at the front, go to the back, and then come down this side. You got anything?
Just to tell y'all that inquiries that for John-Hubbs Inc., incoming companies have increased, and we're having good, good questions and comments of Dodge County. Just want you to know that we're having good, good visibility and good conversations.
Okay, thank you. Next row. Alright, yes, ma'am. Would you kind, or one of y'all wanna come up to the microphone, please?
Sure.
And just state your name, if you don't mind.
I'm Christina Robertson. I live on Shady Oaks Drive, and we happen to be on the other side of the branch of this business that's trying to offer. And we have personally called 2:00 in the morning, because the music is so loud. And I'm not against anyone having a good time and playing music, but when my TV, I mean, I'm sorry, when my air conditioner is running, my ceiling fan is running, and our oscillating fans in our bedroom is running, and we can still hear it, that's extremely loud, in my opinion. I have children sleeping, it wakes them up. It's just too loud. So we don't start calling until after midnight. I did not realize that the ordinance was 1:00 in the morning. What is the noise ordinance?
It has to do with sound pressure level, so many feet away from the site, which I didn't bring that with me tonight, but I don't mind if you give me a phone number or anything before you leave.
Okay.
We gotta give that to you and to other folks too, they don't want me to leave you out.
And I'm all for a safe environment. I have a teenager coming up. I'm all for a safe environment for my child to have a good time. My concern is, it's just really loud. We have called the sheriff's department. We usually start about 12:00, and it's usually 2:00 in the morning before it finally stops. And we literally don't live right there on the road, that, whatever that road is, and there's a branch of trees, and then we have two acres of land, and we're about halfway on our acre of land. And it is just extremely loud is our concern. So as a community on that side, I just have some concerns about noise ordinance. And just on the other side, we have been in our yard and have played Hank Williams Jr. to my husband's delight, and had the sheriff call on us, and this is 2:00 in the afternoon. So I know what it's like to have the police call on you, but 2:00 in the morning just seems a little extreme to me, to be up that late and have music playing. And I don't know if that zone is residential, but in my eyes, it's residential, because it's nothing, nothing but homes, as far as I know, in that general area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on that row? Mr. Kenny?
No.
Okay, we'll start on the back and come this way. Anybody on the back row?
Just a response to what lady's saying.
Okay.
Just on.
If you'll come up to the microphone again, Mr. Spaver.
Ma'am, and we really appreciate your comments. And pretty much, that's what, we just wanna open up a line of communication, because, you know, maybe we gotta stop by her house, you know what I mean? So, and then a lot of times when people come out, before they go into the establishment, they may be playing loud music, and you may get some of that, but the lady who owns the place, she was already shopping around to see what she could do to soundproof the building, already. So we already know that's one thing, that's one thing that we're gonna have to get right and comply with. And appreciate your comments, ma'am. Appreciate you giving us a face. And, like I say, if you all give us the opportunity, especially where you're at, we'll do everything we can to keep that noise down.
Okay.
And like I said, it's more like, in general, it probably won't necessarily be there, if there's other people that have properties outside in the county that, you know, would may let us rent their property or whatever, so...
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on that row? Next row. Yes, ma'am. Just come to the mic, please.
I'm Susan Coffey. This is just a point of information, the Governor's Task Force meeting that's gonna be held at the Recreation Department Thursday night. The program is gonna be given by Mott Smith, who is the program director for the Alzheimer's, the Central Georgia Chapter for the Alzheimer's Association, and she is going to be doing training on what they call CIT training, which is crisis intervention training, what what to do and how to handle when people with Alzheimer's and dementia go missing. You know, how the proper way to handle it, what to do with Maddie's call. I talked to Officer Helms this afternoon. They're expecting between 75 and 100 officers. So this is just a point of information, if any of you all would like to come, or if you know first responders that would like to come or like the information.
Okay, and it's Thursday night at what time?
I believe it's at 6:00.
Okay.
'Cause I'm gonna be there about 5:30, I think.
Thank you, sir.
But the lady's name is Mot Smith that's coming.
Okay, but it's at the Recreation Department, Thursday night at 6:00.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for the information. Okay, first row over here. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Alright, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session. We all need a motion and stuff, but we-
Make a motion and go into executive session of personnel.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Union is unanimous. If y'all would please step outside. There'll be no vote during the time that we have an executive session. After executive session's over, I'll bring y'all back in, and then if there is a vote, it'll be voted in. Thank y'all. Ms. Gail, you got the system, we'll see.
Oh, I do.
Okay, thank you. You got it going, Mr. Gail?
Ready.
Alright, we're back in regular session. So we've gone into executive session to discuss personnel. Does anybody on the board have any motions or comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Union is unanimous, we're adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.